Bob, can you get your microphone there? Welcome. Looks like we've got a, pretty much the whole neighborhood here. We do thank you for turning out. This is something that as a city, we've only done one road improvement project since we've become a city, and that was last summer. And so as we're proposing, as we've looked at our road studies that have been done here in the city, and evaluate the roads, working with the engineering staff and with our road and bridge committee, we've come up with a long-term plan of how we're going to get the roads addressed over the next five and 10 years in the city here. So this is our attempt at communicating. We've done a feasibility study. You see some preliminary costs in front of you. What's going to happen here tonight is, let me, I guess, start with introductions. I'm Jeff Pillon. I'm the mayor. This is our city council here. So Mary Rainville, Linda Blake, Dan Bryan, and Joel Greenberg. And this is our engineer, Shane Nelson, our city attorney, Bob Rupe, and our deputy clerk, Alan Lentz. Lent, sorry. And so what we are going to do tonight is we're going to give you some background. The attorney will start with some basic background. The engineer will give you specifics on the job, but this is a chance for you to be heard. So we're trying to be careful not to cram things through without input. Realize that this is a significant amount of money. I do want people to realize that if this project were to go ahead, those, that can be financed over 10 years by putting it on your property taxes, and there's a basic fee that we have to charge if it's put on the taxes, that by state statute, there's a minimum we have to charge. But that could be spread out over 10 years, or those that, if the project were to go ahead, that SoChu's could pay for it, prepay for it upfront. But this is, this is the time to discuss the condition of the roads, the options we have before us, and then you as residents, your input on that. When that's all taken into consideration, then the council decides whether to move ahead. If we move ahead, you'll see in the presentation, there is another opportunity for the residents to get together, once we know actual numbers. All these numbers right now are draft. These are best estimates that according to the engineers' experience, what a road like this might cost. Sometimes they come in higher, and we cancel the project because it got too high. We had two projects last year. One of them came in, how much lower than estimated, Shane?
Probably close to 10 percent.
The other one, because of the refinery fire up in Superior, the bituminous cost went up, and we decided not to move ahead with that project at all. So in some cases, the projects come in lower than we estimate, others, it was going to get so expensive, we just went back and started over again. And those 66 people come in right behind you tonight to talk about what they think about our new proposal this year. So this is your opportunity to hear us out, and then give us input, and then we'll make a decision. That will not be the final decision until we got to a point where we actually let out bids and sign a contract. We still can change our mind on these things. So I want to make sure everybody understands, you're going to have a full chance to be heard tonight. When we're done with the presentations, I'll give you an opportunity to come up and speak. I ask you to come to the podium. We'll turn on the microphone there. We are being recorded. All of our meetings are on YouTube, and so we do ask again that you give your name and your address, and then state your comment. And again, our next meeting is at 7:00 PM, so we have a full hour here to hear you out. Again, we'll start with Bob Rupe, give some background here and some basic information.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. As the mayor stated, this is the, what we call the first of the two required public hearings for these types of projects. And what these are called, if you hear it out in the community, is a 429 project. It's Minnesota statute 429, the chapter 429 that allows cities and towns to do road projects and share the cost with the residents through the assessment process. And one of the things that that requires is first, that a feasibility report be done. That feasibility report, for those of you who haven't seen it, I think there were some copies in the back, but also it's on the website, the city's website, so if you want to have more information about what Shane, the engineer, will be presenting tonight, there is that copy of that report that's available to you if you go to the city's website, or if there's any extra copies in the back. And the, this is what they call the improvement hearing. This is the first of the two required public hearings. This is, as the mayor said, your opportunity to give feedback to the city council about whether you feel this project should go forward or not. Other things that I've heard at other improvement hearings that I've done is the, you know, maybe there's some stuff that maybe the council doesn't, or the engineer doesn't know about. Maybe something, a drainage issue that you think should be, when we did these public hearings last week, some people brought up potholes and stuff that they felt should be addressed as part of the project. That is the good information to bring forward. Other things that you might want to do with this, if you have questions about the project itself, if the project does go forward, if there's questions about timelines, how do you get to your property, mailboxes, tying into the driveways, anything that maybe Shane didn't address in his presentation that you still have a question on, those are fair game to ask, and we'll try our best to answer them. As the mayor said, these, everything you're hearing tonight with regard to numbers is a best estimate. It's based on Shane's experience in doing this for a living, and we, if this project goes forward, what will happen is they will be, he'll do plans and specs, then he'll put it out for bid, and then we'll actually know kind of what people would charge us to do this project. At that point in time is when we would have what they call the second public hearing, which the mayor alluded to, and that's called the assessment hearing. And before that hearing happens, you will all receive a notice telling you that this is the date that's been scheduled for this hearing, that assessment hearing, and it'll actually tell you the amount proposed to be assessed against your property. As the mayor said, the proposal from the city council right now is to, any amount that is going to be assessed would be spread over your property taxes over a 10-year period, and at an interest rate that's kind of have to be determined. And the reason I say that is because the interest rate is typically, by law, we have to do it at least two percentage points over whatever we borrow the money for, and we haven't borrowed the money yet, because we're not sure what projects we're doing, and then once we figure all of that out, then we'll kind of have an idea of what we need to do. We'll try to negotiate the best deal we can with the lending institution, and then once we do that, that, whatever interest we're being charged by the lending institution, we would pass that along plus 2 percent. And again, as the mayor indicated, we have no control over that. That's part of the bonding statute, because we're a governmental entity. With regard to the assessment amount, the basic amount, as the mayor said, after we do the assessment hearing, you'll be getting a notice that'll explain your options and stuff, but yeah, you, if you didn't want to pay interest, and you wanted to pay just sort of the lump sum of the assessment, you have that ability to do so, and that'll be in that next informational letter that you'll receive. And so with that, I think I'll turn it over-
So Bob, just to clarify, it's also possible to prepay a portion and assess a portion, correct?
No.
No?
You'd have to authorize that. It's not something that you guys have previously authorized.
Okay.
So you would have to, you'd have to make that decision at a later time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Shane?
All right. I have a few slides put together here. I'll just go through them really quick. So first of all, this project location, we're talking about Hallow Street from Conroe 22 down to the southern cul-de-sac. Just a little bit of background. Now then, we have 34 miles of paved road and 20 miles of gravel road. So we have like 63 or so miles of road, and Hallow Street is only a small segment of those 63 miles. Just, it's a fact that we don't have enough money in our general tax levy to fully fund our reconstruction and other roadway needs, and that this project is being considered for completion in 2019. So more specific to your road, the road was originally constructed in 1994, 25 years ago, and considering that most roads are designed to have a life of 20 years, we're doing pretty good. The pavement's probably deteriorated past its useful life, water pattern cracking and whatnot present, but overall, it doesn't look like we have any real subgrade problems. I don't see, when I drive the road, I don't see any areas where the subgrade has either settled or sunk way down, or the opposite, where there's heaves in the road. So that, to me, is an indication that the subgrade is still fairly good. It utilizes a rural section, which means that you use ditches and culverts to convey your stormwater, and to me, it appears that all that is, seems to be functioning properly. I didn't see any areas of standing water or anything like that. So these are some actual photographs of your road. You know, the transverse cracks, we expect to see those. Those are required just because of contraction and expansion when the temperature changes on the pavement. The transverse cracks are needed as spacing, somewhere between 30 and 50 feet, just to relieve the stress in the wintertime when that pavement contracts. You know, the transverse cracks at a higher interval just kind of shows the pavement's age. But the, this right here is, you know, it's really concerning. There's a, getting to be a high percentage of the road that is starting to pattern crack. You can see just these little, what we call alligator cracking, and at this point, we can no longer maintain those cracks. In other words, we can't road them and seal them with a crack filler to keep the water out. They're just too random, and if we tried roading them, the pavement may just pop out of place. A few more pictures here. You can see pretty well in this photograph, the exposed aggregate, which means you can kind of see the rocks protruding from the pavement surface. And that kind of takes me into my next slide. So when pavement is new, it's really a combination of three main ingredients. The rocks in the pavement are what provide the structure. They really carry the loads. There's sand in the bituminous mixture, and that's kind of like the filler, you know, that fills all the voids between the rocks. And then the oil is kind of the glue that holds the, holds everything all together. So when a pavement's new, you can see the black surface. That's, you can see the oil in that surface. It hasn't turned gray yet from the oil degrading. And it's also a very smooth surface, and that's because we haven't lost any of those sand material or the smaller aggregates at the surface. Over time, just due to the effects of weathering, the pavement kind of does this. You can see that we've lost a lot of the sand, and you can see kind of a gray color in the pavement, so that oil is no longer present at the surface. And as we continue to lose the sand or the filler material, you actually start to lose rocks. So these rocks, once you get down to about half the diameter, will start to pop out. You'll lose a little bit of thickness from the surface, but also the pavement becomes brittle because of the loss of oil. As the pavement becomes brittle, it starts to deflect under loads. When it deflects, it cracks, and when we have something that looks like this, it's concerning because it lets water into the aggregate base. So this exhibit kind of shows, if you have your pavement and you have a crack in your pavement, how that acts as a conduit for water to get into the aggregate base. Whenever our aggregate base, or any material for that matter, becomes super saturated, it becomes unstable. You lose your stability with that, so you apply a load to that from a heavy vehicle, and that pavement, again, deflects, and pavement's considered to be flexible. It can be flexed up and down to a point, but after several deflections, especially if the pavement is brittle, it cracks. And once you have a crack, or once you have that, it kind of continues to expand at a fairly rapid pace. During the winter months, we kind of have the opposite thing happen. During a warm day, we might have some snow melt. That water will get into these cracks. Nighttime, it's cooled down again. That water freezes. Whenever water freezes, it increases in volume, and that increase in volume puts pressure or stress upwards on the pavement, which can cause the crack as well. Oops, wrong way. So here in Minnesota, we have a gas tax, and that gas tax is used to fund most of our larger roadway systems, our county roads, our state highways. And since we spend so much money in rural construction each year, the state of Minnesota has decided to do a fair amount of research on pavement. They actually do several million dollars of research each year, and over the course of the last 40 or 50 years, MINDOT has generally determined that the pavement deteriorates at a curve, something that looks like this. And when the pavement is new, it stays in relatively good condition for quite a long time, until you start to lose that oil at the surface, you start developing cracks, then it starts to deteriorate more rapidly, and it kind of goes to the point of very poor fairly quickly. The other interesting thing that this chart shows is that this first 40 percent drop in quality happens over 75 percent of the pavement life. So on a general, like a 20-year road, or expected life, it's saying that first 40 percent drop in quality would happen over the first 15 years. The next 40 percent drop in quality happens over 12 percent of the pavement's life. So after the pavement begins to deteriorate, it actually deteriorates much more quickly. They also have determined that $1 for renovation here will cost anywhere from $8 to $100 an hour here, or $100 there. And that's basically, the longer that we let the pavement deteriorate, the more water will get into aggregate base, and over time, our subgrade will actually fail or have problems. So what we're talking about is doing a repair, probably, probably somewhere in this area. We definitely have lost the surface, but we haven't lost the subgrade yet, so it's not the most expensive time for a repair. The proposed improvements are to reclaim the existing bituminous, basically give you an entirely new road, pave three and a half inches of new bituminous and two lifts, shoulder that new road. So this is kind of what the process looks like. This is a reclaiming machine. It's taking the existing bituminous, it's grinding it up, and as it's grinding it up, it's also mixing it in with the underlying base. So if we, say, let's say right now, we have six inches of aggregate base and three inches of pavement, it's going to grind all that up. Now we have nine inches of aggregate base, so we're starting with a thicker and stronger aggregate base. And then on top of that, we will be paving the three and a half inches of new bituminous. So after the material is reclaimed, it's shaped, generally with a road grader, and Then after it's compacted, the new bituminous pavement can be, excuse me, constructed. So again, what we're considering is, kind of say to here in bullet points, reclaiming the existing bituminous, paving the new bituminous mat. We would match all the driveways. You know, our new road surface would be probably four to six inches higher than it is now. We'd have to cut back at each driveway to match in, re-shouldering it, and as I stated before, the grainer system is assumed to be adequate, so this project would not involve replacing any of your driveway culverts or any of things of that nature. So if you do have problems, or if you're aware of problems, that's something that we'd like to hear about tonight. The engineer's estimate for this project is $136,000. And again, that's based on my experience from bidding projects of similar size and similar, with similar items in the area. We've identified a total of 10 properties that received their access from Hallow Street. Again, this would be something, if you knew of another property that was not shown on this map, that's something that we'd love to hear about tonight. We think we got them all. So the city would propose to assess on a per-unit assessment method, spreading 50 percent of those costs across the 10 benefiting properties, results in an assessment of $6,800 per unit. And then as stated earlier, that can be paid as a single lump, single lump sum after completion of the project, generally before November 15th, or it could be just added to your taxes and amortized over time. This next slide kind of shows where we're at. Schedule-wise, we are here at the very beginning of the process, and all these are steps that will have to happen or have to occur in order to complete this project. So assuming we heard favorable comments tonight, the next step would be to order plans and specifications. If they were ordered in January, we'd have those plans and specifications done in a little over a month. So sometime in February, the city council would approve the plans, authorize ad for bids. At that point, we'd actually get real contractor bids for this project, and after we knew what, after we received those and knew what those bids were, we'd invite you back for the assessment hearing. So at that time, we have a firm number that this is your proposed assessment. Again, at this time, it's just an estimate, and before, the council would hear your comments at that assessment hearing before awarding the contract. Once we award the contract, that is the point of no return. So if the city at any point in this process can stop the project until such a point as we award a contract. So here in April 2019, if we get to this point, we can't turn back. If we did advance this project, we would probably give the contractor as much time as possible between that June, you know, kind of, we kind of target that they don't start until after school's out and they, they're finished before school starts, so we're not, don't have that conflict with kids waiting for the school bus. But anywhere in time that, inside that timeframe, they'd have the ability to complete the project as it's easily fit. That's how we generally get the best contractor bids. Give them some flexibility with a couple of, you must be, must start after this date and finish before a certain date. The actual project, I would estimate, won't take longer than three or four weeks. It'd be a week or two of prep. There would be paving, and then after the paving, they let, you know, stay out the map, let it cure for a few days, and then a couple days of shouldering and finish work. So we've, we've done enough of these public improvement hearings. We've always asked the questions, well, what are, what are the alternatives? Can we just delay the project for a few years? Yes, that's always an option. You know, if this project were delayed, you'd probably start to see potholes become more and more prevalent. It's almost guaranteed that the, any future repair would be more expensive than the repair at this time, and then the city's future ability to fund it is unknown, especially with, you know, the main driver in the cost of the bituminous is the cost of oil, and if oil prices were to kind of go crazy again at some point, at that time, we would have a, probably a lot more roadway needs than funds to complete those projects. So like was previously stated, this is an official public hearing, so we're trying to keep track of our comment, of your comments, so we can look back at them. So if you do have comments, please step up to the podium, sign in, and address the mayor. We'll turn it back to the mayor.
All right. We welcome your comments. Questions? I know it's a lot of information in a short period of time, so.
Hi.
Hello?
My name is Mark Mueller, and I'm at 19650 Hallow Street. Couple of questions I have is, what happens if you decide to take the route of having it added on to your property tax and you sell the property in the next 10 years?
Can I handle that, Bob?
Yes. Whenever there's a potential for a sale, typically the real estate agents or the title company or whoever's handling the closing will contact the city and ask if there's any quote pending assessments. And so that's when the people that are in charge of your closing would learn that there is either an assessment on the property or may be placed on the property. And then what happens after that, it used to be kind of a, I don't know, given. It wasn't a law or anything, but everybody would pay off the assessment. Nowadays, it's negotiable as part of your closing. And so what happens is, if this was put on your, your property taxes, if that was the election that you made, then you would negotiate with the people that are purchasing your house as to what happens with that. It doesn't go away, but you negotiate with them, who's paying it. And so when I bought my house, there was a pending assessment. I ended up, as part of the negotiating of the deal, I ended up paying that. I took it over, in a sense.
I've had some comments from some of the other people up in, I don't pretend to speak for them. I think there's a, I think we do feel like there's some pushback on not wanting to do this particular project at this time. Is it, is this something that we actually have some say in, or is we just give our input and then you'll weigh it and then make a decision on whether this project happens or not?
It is, under the law, the statutes read that it's the council's decision to make whether they go forward or not, but they will weigh heavily what you guys say, and ultimately, they have to make that decision as your elected representatives on this. Under the waste, the state law is, it's not put to a vote, it's, you know, no show of hands, it's, you give your comments, they weigh it, and then they determine, like the mayor said last year, one project did go forward, the other project did not.
And did I hear you correctly that if we get to the assessment meeting and the quotes come in way higher than what you're originally estimating right now, that that would delay the project as well?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to delay it, but traditionally, if there's some anomaly like the Superior refinery, you know, that issue, it made sense to not go forward with the project. It's more than what we were anticipating, and there isn't, doesn't say that we can't take the information that we've already gathered from the engineer. You know, the engineer, if this goes forward, will now then create plans and specs and stuff. Well, those don't lose their value. That's still there, and maybe we don't, we just bid it again at maybe a different time to see if we can get better bids and stuff. It doesn't mean, the only time that I can't, as the engineer stated, the only time I can't get the city council out of this is if they actually award a contract. Other than that, I can get them out.
But what you're saying is it's possible that, let's say, instead of $6,800 assessment, it comes in at $7,200 assessment, and you figure, that's close enough, we're going to move forward. That's an entire possibility?
It is.
It is. Okay. And, you know, I will say this, just as an opinion to lay forward here, I was a little taken aback by this in that I felt like the road was holding up relatively well. I understand what you're saying about they have a certain lifespan to them, and I'm in construction myself, so I understand that. It just, I see a little age on the road, but it didn't, it didn't seem like it was really what I would call worn out or anything of that kind of. And we, we don't seem to have a lot of traffic on our road. It doesn't get a real lot of heavy use, although, you know, that's subjective, I'm sure, but as, from my opinion, it just, it just didn't seem quite that bad, but I just wanted to get those things cleared up. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that, you know, as the engineer had stated, you know, we do have quite a bit of blacktop road we're responsible for here, and we've done a road study and evaluated all the roads and given them a numerical rating. And when we pick the roads that we're trying to deal with here, one of the things, we're looking at roads that aren't too far gone so that we can minimize the cost now and get that road life extended. We had three hearings last week, and all of those roads were in much better condition than this road. And the idea was to extend that from, you know, 10 to 15 more years on that road before anything major was necessary to be done. This road is probably more in the middle. We have some roads that are- We have some roads that are much worse in town here. This is probably more in the middle. And we're just trying to, as you saw, the pattern cracking, the alligator cracking in there, that's, that's likely to be breaking up here sooner rather than later. And one of the problems with a typical winter, when you start plowing and garbage trucks, even though there's not a lot of other traffic on the road, garbage trucks tend to be some of the, the most significant wear issues when it comes to roads. One of the other hearings we had last week, they're on a cul-de-sac also. And most of the people had switched carriers, so garbage haulers, and they're going to go actually go door-to-door and see if they can get everybody in the neighborhood to go to the same hauler so they don't have multiple trucks coming up and down the street every week. It's an option. I don't know how many different haulers are coming up and down Halles, but, you know, some of those things will help. But when you see the pattern cracking there, we're getting to the point where this is a reclaim, but we get much further on, we're going to have to take the road completely down and start over again, and that gets, I don't know, Shane, if you had the cost slide up there that you had had last week?
I did not, but the reconstruction, the total reconstruction, we have to remove the aggregate and rebuild the subgrade, is usually at least double the, the cost of this. So we would apply the same assessment percentages, fifty percent city, fifty percent assessed to the benefiting properties, so, you know, in all likelihood, these assessment amounts would double.
And it is something that, that, you know, previous, when the town board was doing the assessments, they would assess a hundred percent. And we, as a city council, decided we would take fifty percent of that and spread that out among the residents, and the fifty, the benefiting residents would get fifty percent, and the rest of the residents would, would help share with the other fifty percent. We do have other residents that, that, when we were township, have told us that they were getting a hundred percent assessment on any road projects that were done there, so. So we're trying to, even though it's a large number, trying to make that as manageable as possible under the conditions. One of the challenges of being in now then, the beauty of it is, we have nice, large lots and wide open spaces. When it comes to sharing costs like this, with only ten residences on the road, it becomes a little more burdensome, so. Other comments?
I did think of one more thing, if you don't mind.
No problem. It's what we're here for.
Again, Mark Mueller, I had heard some, and I don't know whether this is true or not, you know how rumors go, but I heard that eventually we were going to be connected sewer-wise on this area, since we're right close to the, of the county line, those are my property. So has there been any discussion or anything about that? Because I would hate to spend all this money for a road and then have to tear it up because they're putting in some kind of sewers and then get it again with another assessment. Has there been any talk about that at all, or is that just a rumor?
You know, that, that would be a rumor. Right now, in Anoka County, we actually were given special consideration by the Met Council, where they had a portion of the city that they wanted us to protect, lot size-wise, they didn't want anything smaller than ten acres developed in that area. It was called the Musa District, that was over off of forty-seven, in the, forty-seven and the Viking area on the east side of the city. But we have been excused from that requirement because the Met Council does not see in their twenty-forty plan or any immediate future of the potential for sewer pipes to reach out to us. Right now, there was talk years ago, when the land just west of you, when they're proposing six-hundred-and-fifty homes there. The enticement was to have Elk River bring sewer and water out there if they could somehow fit it into their system. And in return, they would, the landowners would potentially grant land for another junior high and some parkland there.
Yeah.
But that, that did fall through, and you've got a nice buffer of a horse farm there behind you now, so that, much nicer than six-hundred-and-fifty homes, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But that would be, right now, the, the only logical way in, and at this point, it would probably take a developer coming in and buying out a bunch of your homes to do that, because to, to make that reasonable, and make that affordable, they'd have to have the smaller lots.
I just want to make sure that wasn't.
The city of now then has, has nothing in our comprehensive plan for the twenty-forty plan that we're working on right now in any portions of the city. And especially over on the west side.
Water and natural gas as well?
Natural gas is coming through in, in different sections. Water will not.
Will natural gas affect this road at all?
Typically, the natural gas, they do in the easement on the sides of the road, so there is a, an area off the shoulder of the road that the, there's an easement setback. You know, that's, that's where we get into these little problems, because we plow snow into that and, and the utilities come through that, but they do that rather than come up the road. So the easements will be offside the road, so this, this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shane, but I see no utility work in this that would affect the road work that we're doing here.
I agree.
But that's a great question you had, though.
Yeah, if, if sewers were coming in, this would all be for naught, but we don't see that in the life of this road, so. Other questions, comments, concerns?
I'm Rick Hughes, and I'm at nineteen-six-five-five Hall Street. Back to the same development, you said it's probably pretty much a little out, there was talk at, at that time that there would be Viking, where our house would be cut off at Viking, and there would be a road out through the, um, the development to Twin Lakes, to elementary area. So that's no longer a likely scenario that would affect this, this road work?
I have not seen anything suggesting that since that whole development went away. I don't know that we have any pressure, Shane, again, I'll defer to you on this, but any pressure at all from the county or any other to close off the access to Viking? And, and right now, actually, the county road swings down south on Ba there, so I'm not sure what pressure we might have on that, but.
That is correct. With that, if that Elk River development would have occurred, there would have been another road or access to County Road twenty-two, and it didn't meet the county's access spacing guidelines. I was involved with, with some of those meetings at that time, and really it came down to, to two scenarios. Either we keep Hall Street and all those new homes have to use that as their main entrance into the Elk River development, or we close Hall Street and then our residents will come in through the Elk River, the, the new roads. And our preference at the time was, you know, we didn't think our residents would want six-hundred vehicles per day or the traffic from six-hundred homes on their road, but now that that development application has, has gone away, there's, there's been no discussion of it since.
I just have one other comment. You mentioned how the road deteriorates, becomes rubber. My house was the first one built there. I moved in about a year after it was built. That road then has never been smoothed. I used a roller blade on it, and I was rough as the road I ever would have put on, so I don't know that it's deteriorated that much.
Thank you. So what, the, the, did we have road specs at the time this was built, Shane, do you know?
Nineteen ninety-four.
My understanding is we didn't have much we were enforcing back then.
Right. Yeah, it.
I think that it sold up this well, is fortunate. We, we have other roads that were built approximate to that, and, and not all developers were as diligent in preparing their road bases. And in some cases, they literally just took the field dirt to make a ditch and put it on the road base and called it good, and got their money, and a few years down the road, you know, that, that road's erupting every spring. And so we had, in some, in one situation, we did literally grade the, we had the blacktop ground up and turn it back into a gravel road for a period of time here, because we just couldn't maintain the blacktop anymore. It was tough to plow, the school buses and the garbage trucks were having trouble going up and down it, and every spring there were road heaves, so. Depending on, on what the developer did when the development went in, makes a big difference on what we can do now and what the costs are. This one, it's Shane's estimate, the base is pretty decent compared to some of the other ones in the cities. Other, other comments? We got about twenty minutes for the next crowd to start wandering in, and we want to hear what you have to say, so.
I'm Wendy Olsen, one nine four seven Hall Street. And the bigger question I have is, going back to the gas line that you were saying, is there a possibility that that assessment could come at the same time or within the ten years?
There, there wouldn't be an assessment for gas. When the gas company comes through, they generally, if, if, if they're not up Halles yet, they will come and they'll go to all the residents on Halles and state, at, at least, as I've been done every place else in the city. They'll go to those residents and say, here's the price, if you want to sign up now, trying to get all ten homes to sign up. And they'll give you a beneficial price to get everybody signed up at that point. All those that sign up will get that price. Anybody who chooses not to at that time will go back to the normal gas rates. So the gas line will be there, but for you to hook up, there will be a, a non-preferential rate typically. So when they came through my area, I chose not to sign up at the time. My neighbors that did got that preferential rate. Now, if I want to go back and get natural gas, the line's sitting there already, they just have to hook up to it, but I have to pay, after the first seventy-five feet, I have to pay so much per foot. So there's no city assessment, there's nothing here, you'll be paying the gas company directly. There'll be no assessment to your taxes on that, though.
Do you know what the timeline for that might be?
I do not know in, in that area where, where we're at, gas-wise, so.
I'm just trying to figure out how can we budget for ten years for this and, and possibly this?
You know, in, in, and I don't, we can check with the gas company and see where that part of town fits on there.
That would be helpful.
Because in, in now then, I would think sooner rather than later.
Right.
But we'll put that on our list.
And probably required to sign up, hook up to it? It's not a requirement, it's just a choice?
The choice. In, in a case like that, they're, they're going to be putting the line in, so they're going to cover the infrastructure themselves. And that's why they say if you're more than seventy-five feet off the road, then you pay per foot after that. But, so we can, we'll make a note, and we'll give the gas company and see what the.
That would be great.
Other questions, comments? I know Mr. Mueller spoke for a lot of you. Anybody else want to echo what he has to say?
Matt Antla from one-nine-three-three-zero Hall Street. I was just more wondering about the development side. Do we have joint meetings with the Elk River side? I guess since majority of the land to the west now is owned by K and R Farms, which is kind of maybe a known developer in the area and owns the whole area around Twin Lakes Elementary School. Do we have plans to meet with Elk River and make sure, or see their plans for development in the future?
We, we do have, they, when they do their comprehensive plan update, they need to give us a copy of it, so we can review that and see what their long-range plans are, so we'll get a chance to weigh in on that as well when that comes in. And actually, that was one of my goals for this year, is to start meeting with the neighboring communities around us. I've met with the mayor and with the school board on, on various things, but we haven't talked about specifically development in that area. We do know Mr. Raceler very well, and we do know his development, you know, he's very proud of the development going on around the school. I say there is a bit of a buffer there with the, with the horse farm, but that's not enough for the whole neighborhood, so. So that is one of our intentions this year, is to, they do have to submit their comp plan to us, and then we'll be meeting with them individually as well, so.
Thank you.
And, and that's the type of thing that, that if we do that, we'll probably have some organizational meetings to begin with, but that's the type of thing where neighborhoods would be invited to participate. So if we were to have, Ramsey, we typically will try and get a joint meeting together with their council to talk about common issues between our cities. If we were to set something up like that, we would probably also try and set something up where the residents could weigh in, sit in on that meeting as well. So if we get something going there, we'll, we'll publicize that as well, so. Other comments or questions?
I am Donna Goldrey at one-nine-four-five-five Hall Street. And my question is, is for the developers, do they have like a set deadline or to, to turn into their developmental plan? Like what city wanted to do it in the fall? Do they have to give us so much warning that you get, like, this is what we want to do? Is that, is my, is my question?
Yeah, so in the, the city of Elk River, there typically is a, a process where developments are evaluated by city officials and then come to a, an open meeting. In, in our situation, typically that'll come through our planning and zoning commission. We have no control over what's happening on the, our western border, so in as far as Elk River's process, unless you're following their meetings, and, and I would advise that people sign up for informational emails from Elk River. So if you're, they're planning and zoning, if you want to know what's going on with their planning and zoning commission and their city council, typically they will send out agenda electronically, and I would advise keeping track of that, because if the developers coming in, they generally do go before the planning and zoning and the council, before they get approval to, they have to have their plaits approved and, and their developments approved. They have to show how they're tying in if they want city sewer and water, that all has to be part of a long-range plan. But we are not typically notified of that, so it's up to the residents to make sure that they're on that.
Do we know what their timeline is in order to get their plaits approved?
Shane, do you have any clue on that, what's typical?
Mr. Mayor, I would say any, any sizable plat probably takes, yeah, at least a minimum of six months from the first time it's submitted to the city, and a lot of times, closer to a year is, is typical. That's not a statutory process by any means, it's just kind of, uh, just the logistics of it. There's a lot of engineering and surveying work that goes into a, a new development, and that's just quite frankly how long it takes to go through the process.
And that's not to say that, that some plans haven't already been presented that we don't know about, so. So it, it's worth a call to the city of Elk River and say, is anything going on in my neck of the woods here that I should, beneficial to know about, so. And, and I would recommend all residents that you can get on our emails as well, if you want to know what's going on with our planning and zoning and our city council. We're on YouTube, but you can also sign up with Ellen at the office to be notified, so you can, you can be ahead of the game here, so to see something going on. Other comments? General, like I say, we have probably most of the neighborhood here. General opinion on, on proceeding, if it comes in around sixty-eight-hundred dollars per household, general opinion of the, of the residents. And, you know, and, and, and obviously, we do what we can to, to come in underneath that, you know, we ask Shane to give us his, his best estimate, and, you know, where we can control those costs, we obviously do our best to do that. As I said, the, the project that we did go through with last year came in, I'd say ten percent under is significant, but it came in lower than we anticipated, so.
I would think now that estimates are going to be coming in, and about as low as you're going to have fuels down, and there's a lot of work out there, so your estimates are going to be competitive, so this is probably about as low as where everybody is at.
We're, we're hoping that they come in very competitive. And one of the reasons, we're, we're grouping five different developments in our plans if, if all five go ahead, and we, we did proceed with the three last week. ahead, and we did proceed with the three last week, and we have this one here, and we have then a big one coming after this tonight. But one of the things we're trying to do is entice people to take the package, give us a better deal by saying, our equipment's going to be in the area, we can get some volume discount here. So we're hoping to take Shane's estimate and get something a little more aggressive by the contractors, but...
I have a question on the financing side. Do you go to multiple banks and to get a lower rate? Because you said that the rate is plus 2% by law. How are you ensuring that you get the lowest rate on financing for the assessment?
We do deal with an agency that helps us with our financing, and Bob, maybe you know a little more on the specifics.
Like the mayor said, we have a consulting firm. That's their job to work with municipalities, cities and towns, counties, these various, it's all over the state. And so we work with Elers, they come up and they look at what is the best range for us, what's the best option. And I was on the phone yesterday for a project not here, but down in the Rochester area, talking with one of these financial consultants about what are the different options here and what, which one is going to get us the lowest interest rate, which is really what we're looking for. We're looking to borrow the money at the lowest possible cost, and so generally, these guys do, and they put this, in some cases, they say, just go out and borrow the money from a local bank, and then we try to canvass the banks to get the best deal. Sometimes there's some state revolving funds that we can get money from to borrow from. Other times, it's putting it out for a bid, for a bond, and doing that. So we work with these agencies to try, and they have the same goal, is to get the best possible interest rate that we can. Because all we want at the end of the day is a big check. We take that check, we pay the contractors, and then as the, we take the property, when it comes to you guys pay your property tax statements, we take that money to pay back that bond. And so that's, I think, these, historically, these companies, Elers, Springstead, David Drowne, there's a bunch of different ones out there, they do a really good job to keep the rates low. And they keep an eye open for which one has a lower rate right now.
Yeah, I would assume they're all...
Because that's why he called me, that's why he called me yesterday morning and say, hey, this one's just come up, and you guys fit the criteria. It's not the usual, but let's go for that one because it's a cheaper interest rate by a percentage point, you know?
Any other comments or questions on the Hallis road improvement? I saw a couple of heads going this way, a lot of heads not doing anything, so.
I guess when we're running this project, are there somebody, if we want to handle this, is there somebody working with them with quality control, they're checking compaction so we don't end up with the same issues?
Yes, Shane's company is responsible to oversee the project, so. And I don't know if you caught, it would be in two lifts, so there would be a two-inch layer put down, and then later, an inch and a half wear course on top of that, but Shane's staff is...
Is this typical for this sizable road, only two inches, or is that...
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
That is typical. And we use all, I mean, we use the MINDOT standard specifications, and all of our construction servers are MINDOT certified, so.
See like that's a driveway you got to meet, but...
Sure. A lot of driveways are two and a half inches of pavement over six or eight inches of every base.
And we will be putting the bituminous back into the base, so that will give us a little bit...
I think that when they did that, 13, that seemed like it made the max base.
Anything else? So should the council decide to proceed, there will be another hearing when the actual numbers are available, and you'll have another chance to weigh in. And again, like we said last year, the one project came in about where we thought it would, and we proceeded with it, the other one went way up and we chose not to at that time, so.
Just to note, so if you're going to notice, as we weigh, the price goes up.
Yep. And that's, and that's one of the reasons, you know, it's, nobody likes to start out the first of the year with saying, hey, how about spending some money? But there is a construction cycle we need to fit into, and we need to, we want to be there, if we're going to proceed with these projects, we want to be there when the construction companies are deciding their calendar for the year, so we fit in and get the prime opportunity rather than trying to fill out something later in the year. So this, this does make sense, even though it's a bit of shock to start out the year this way, so. Again, all of the council members, if you didn't want to speak tonight on record here, or you think of something else when you go home, you're talking with your neighbors, you're talking with your spouse, all the council members are available, our numbers are available at city offices. You can contact us directly if you have something else that you think comes up, and we'll take that into consideration as well. We'll get the information to Ellen, Ellen then gets it out to all the council members. So if something else, you can call the council directly or contact Ellen.
When can we expect a decision from the council, and will that be communicated to us, or do we have to like go...
Typically, when, to move to the next step, for Shane to be able to do what he needs to do next, we have a resolution for each project here tonight. So at the end of the meeting tonight, we will discuss these, and the council will take a vote as to whether to proceed. So on the three that we did last week, in order to get Shane the proper time to move forward, we did vote, and all three of those, we did vote to proceed with last week. So we won't be voting yes or no to go to the next step at the end of the meeting tonight.
And is that posted on the website?
That will be on our minutes, and that will be on the website, yep.
But as the mayor said earlier, the point, and as Shane said, the point of no return is when we actually award the contract.
And that will be the April timeframe.
I have one more question for Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
You mentioned that our driveways would be done to match the new grade. How far back do you say that would go?
That's, that depends on each driveway slope. So if you have a driveway that goes up in slope, and if we're raising the road, say, four to six inches, it's usually a shorter distance. And if you have a driveway that goes down in slope a little bit, it's a little bit longer. If a driveway that goes in slope a lot, even longer yet. So if the council orders plans and specifications for a project like this, we'll actually send our survey crews out to the site, and we'll survey your, the edge of the road and your driveways, and then we'll determine the length or the tie-in point based on those survey shots and providing the, you know, a nice drivable slope. We don't want anything that looks like this, you know, a steep bump and then a flat slope, so.
For those that were here for the Hallis hearing, if you hadn't signed in in the back, we'd appreciate on your way out if you would sign in, just so we have the spelling of the names right for the minutes and know who is in attendance. We'd appreciate that. For those of you that are here for the old Viking hearing, I'd make sure you'd sign in in the back as well, please, and we'll get started as soon as we transition the room here. So we'll close the improvement hearing for the Hallis project.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I wasn't even...
So Bob, as far as approving the split assessment, partial payment, what does that take? Is that just a policy or...
That's a policy, that's a motion. Most landowners don't allow for partial payments.
And the county might not allow it.
And the county may not allow it. So that's one of the things that they kind of need to find out for their own accounting procedures. And some of this is working with the county assessor's office, you know, to make sure that we follow whatever rules they have. That's why it says, being noticed is typically, partial prepayments are not been authorized. So I think you have the right to do it, but you also got to make sure it's something that you can work with your county.
And so we should check with the county.
Yeah. That's what it would be. The other thing...
I said, don't eat, I said, don't, don't...
So my time...
It's a mess, it's a mess. I just got on here, I...
We didn't know who was prepaying those 12 until November, mid-November.
He was not a happy guy.
He must, he must...
How?
Next, $6,000 taxes.
Are you thinking of...
And what I want to know, who has $6,000 in taxes? He must have quite a plate.
Yeah, because my mom is a 208er, so I...
She has $7,000, she wants it.
Unless she has a very nice house.
I think I know which one it is, and they have a cement driveway that's about quarter of a mile long, is the one I'm thinking of. Should have done bow.
Bow? You crossed the line again. So I, so I can't cross the line.
The gavel dropped. We're done.
I'm crossing the line.
As soon as they drop the gavel, we can cross the line.
The gavel was, it's like beginning and, you know, it's the end of the time.
So I have a little bit of time to...
I would go quickly.
Can I talk to...
Talk to whoever you want.
You can talk to whoever you want. I'm going to get out of here.
I'm going to be here all night if we don't have... I like an efficient meeting.
Really needs to start on time.
Right, so, that's, so I just like to keep things moving along.
Call this meeting in order. This is the improvement hearing for Old Viking Boulevard, round two. So what we're going to do here is we'll give people the opportunity to weigh in. After a brief introduction by myself and the council here, we have our attorney give an overview and some background, and then Shane will give the specifics of the project, and then... And then we'll give the residents an opportunity to weigh in. Now, we have an old Viking, I think we have 66 properties represented, and we have a portion of that here tonight. I am the mayor, Jeff Pilon, and this is the city council. Mary Rainville, council member Linda Blake, Dan Bryan, and Joel Greenberg, and then our engineer, Shane Nelson, our city attorney, Bob Rupe, and our deputy clerk, Ellen Lee. And so we are here again to present information and receive information. We looked at this project a year ago. Bituminous prices became, two things happened. We looked at a more extensive, the road needed more extensive work, we believed, once we looked at it further, which changed the prices a bit. And then bituminous with the fire up at the superior refinery took a big jump, and so we pulled back and decided not to proceed last year. We'd like to present the current facts to the residents and get feedback and input tonight. So we will have plenty of opportunity to hear what you have to say and weigh in accordingly. So I will turn it over to Bob Rupe, the attorney, to start us off here.
Good evening, everyone. We are operating here tonight, as you may remember from last year, under the, what they call Minnesota statute 429. It's a chapter that allows the cities and towns, in order to help pay for road projects, to share some of the costs with the residents that live along the road. And we've already, under that statute, have gotten what they call a feasibility report from the engineer. There may have been copies in the back, I don't know if there were any left when you got here, but it's also on the township's website. If you'd like to read what that feasibility report says, a lot of that information will be summarized here in Shane Nelson, the engineer's PowerPoint presentation. But this is, for tonight, is the first of two required public hearings under that chapter of Minnesota law. And this is what they call the improvement hearing. And this gives you an opportunity to learn about the project, but also to ask questions of the council and of the engineer and myself. If you have questions, we'll try our best to answer it. But this is then also your opportunity to give them feedback about whether you feel like this project should go forward or not. Now, as you'll hear tonight, even if the, as you heard kind of at the end of the last presentation, even if the city council votes to proceed with plans and specs by quote, ordering the improvement, this project, the point of no return is when the contract, of course, is given to a contractor. And of course, because if we defaulted on that or some sort of tried to withdraw from that, we'd be sued and owe them damages. So in this case, what we're trying to do tonight is get some information to you, hear what you have to say, answer your questions, and then there'll be, at, once the engineer has a chance to, if it goes forward, to do plans and specs, put it out for bid, then we'll get the bid back, then we'll have another public hearing, the second one, which they call the assessment hearing, which you'll see on the timeline when the engineer presents that. And that's a, that's when you actually know what the actual number would be. This right now is an estimate, it's kind of a best guess based on past experiences, but the number that you would get in the spring when that next assessment hearing is, would be the actual number that would be proposed. It is being, as Shane will cover, it's over a 10-year period, and so then there'll be opportunities for you to also give feedback at that point in time to the city council. Then they have to make a decision, do they go forward and award the contract or not. So tonight, I appreciate you guys all giving up your evening and coming here, and I'm sure the council looks forward to hearing what you have to say, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
All right. Shane?
Thank you. Well, I have some slides that I'll run through fairly quickly to help with my presentation. So we're talking about improving Old Viking Boulevard from Nowland Boulevard all the way over to Highway 47. So, little bit of background, city of Nowland owns about 63 miles of road, responsible for maintaining that, those roads. Old Viking Boulevard, although it is a pretty significant portion of road in the city, it's only three and a half miles out of 63, so it's, we definitely have a lot more roadways to consider other than just, just one stretch. There's just not, simply not enough money levied each year to fully fund all of our roadway needs. So the, because of that, the city has adopted a partial assessment method. This is our second public improvement hearing, as the mayor indicated, and we are considering doing a project this year in 2019. So we don't have the exact date that Old Viking Boulevard was constructed the first time, we know it was a whole county road, there were some approvals done right around 1992, and at that point, it was turned back to the city, or to the township at the time. We've done a couple of ratings, numerical ratings on Old Viking Boulevard, received a, what, an 80 rating in 2008, and 2015 it fell to 53. And at this time, even though I haven't actually been out there and assigned a numerical rating, I guess it's probably upper 30 to low 40. So it's continuing to deteriorate as most roadways do. One thing that happened last year is... One thing that happened last year is, is, you know, we, at this public improvement hearing, we heard from the residents, hey, we think that there's a, you know, a lot of elevator cracking, there's some, maybe some drainage issues. The city should consider a more extensive repair. So we have, last summer, we investigated some of those drainage issues. We've taken another look at doing a more extensive repair this year. So we have incorporated some comments that we heard from these meetings last year. So real quick, I'll take us through some, some pictures, actual existing conditions of the road. Here are some edge cracking or pattern cracking along the edge. Here's a, something that started as a transverse crack. You can see several secondary cracks that have occurred over time, as well as some edge cracking there. We have some more random cracking in the shoulder. Again, we have quite a bit of random cracking. We also have a lot of crack sealant in this road. And crack sealant sometimes presents challenges when overlaying roads, so we consider that. Areas like this are what we were really concerned about. Areas that are, where we have pattern cracking, this would be considered probably block cracking. And at this point, we just, the cracks are too random to try to, to crack fill them. There's no good way to seal those cracks and keep the water out of our aggregate base any longer. Few more pictures. Okay, so just a little bit about pavement. Pavement really is, consists of three main ingredients. It has the rock, the rock provides the, the structure and carry the loads. We have the sand, and the sand is kind of the filler, it helps fill the voids in between the rocks. And then we have the oil, and the oil kind of acts as the glue. It, it's what, what holds the batuminous together. So when pavement is new, it kind of has this, this shiny black surface. That's, you can see the oil content in that surface. And it's also very smooth. You know, that sand and that oil is, is filling any void. But over time, what happens is just due to natural deterioration, we start to lose the oil in the surface of that pavement. It becomes gray and brittle. And we also lose our, some of our sand that kind of acts as a filler, exposing our aggregate. So over time, as we continue to lose that sand, we kind of lose thickness from the surface. And as these aggregates, you know, as we expose about half diameter of that aggregate, then we start losing our larger aggregates as well. Over time, we also have pattern cracking or elevator cracking. Again, these are hard to maintain and they allow moisture to get into the aggregate base. And this graphic kind of illustrates how if we have our pavement located here, we have a, a crack develops. And if that crack is unmaintained, it directs, or acts as a conduit for water to get into our aggregate base. Whenever our aggregate base, or any material for that matter, becomes super saturated, loses its stability. And when we have a load applied to that, causes the pavement to deflect. Pavement can only take so many deflections before it cracks. During the winter months, we have kind of, the opposite thing happen. You know, we might get a nice warm day, we'll have some snow melt. That moisture will find its way into the crack, it will saturate the aggregate base below it. Whenever water freezes, it increases, increases in volume. So that puts some upward pressure or stress on the pavement and can cause the pavement to crack that way as well. So in Minnesota, a lot of our, our busier roads, our state highways, and most of our county roads are funded through the gas tax. And they, the, the state of Minnesota has recognized that they spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in batuminous paving. So they decided several years ago, okay, we should study pavement and try to determine its characteristics and how it deteriorates and whatnot. So over the past forty or fifty years, they've, they've had a pretty extensive research program. And they've generally determined that when pavement is new, it stays in, in really excellent condition for quite a while. And then as the, the oil in the surface becomes, it becomes a deterior, excuse me, as the oil in the surface starts to deteriorate, as cracks start to develop, the condition of the pavement starts declining more rapidly and creates kind of a curve, something of this matter. The, the other interesting point is this, that first forty percent drop in quality happened over the seventy-five percent of the pavement's life. So on a, a road that's, has a design life of twenty years, that would tell us, they expect that first forty percent drop in quality to happen over the fifteen years. You know, a pretty significant portion of its design life. The next forty percent drop in quality happens over twelve percent of the pavement life. So once you have lost that oil on the surface, once you have cracks developed, it deteriorates much more rapidly. The other interesting thing is one dollar in renovation here will cost substantially more if you wait and the, the pavement gets down to here. So right now, Old Viking Boulevard is probably somewhere in, in this range. It's, it's not, I wouldn't classify it as, as excellent or good condition any longer. Still drivable, there's not any major potholes. It's probably in that fair to poor category. And what we're, after going back and looking at the condition of the road, another year of deterioration, what we think is the right improvement now is to go in and reclaim the existing pavement and just build a brand-new road. So reclaim the aggregate base, use that aggregate base, plus the, the pavement that's reclaimed. So if we have, let's say we have six inches of aggregate base now and three inches of pavement, if we reclaim that and make that all aggregate base, now we have nine inches of aggregate base. So we're already starting from a better foundation. And then we pave three and a half inches on top of that. So this is kind of what the equipment would look like, that would, you'd see on the road. This is a reclaiming machine. So this reclaiming machine is traveling from the right of the screen to the left. There's pavement here, and as it encounters this pavement, it grinds it up and it grinds it with the aggregate base that's below it. After that material is reclaimed, they then bring a road grader out there to shape the base. They then, they then compact the base. And after it is shaped and compacted, we can pave our new batuminous map. Another thing that we heard at the last public improvement hearing is we do have some isolated drainage problems. And so last we visited the site after a couple of times, one time after a snow melt and one time after a good hard rain. And I noted all the areas that had staining water. We then surveyed those areas and determined some improvements for those. So the city has incorporated or will be completing those drainage repairs kind of concurrently with this project. So the engineer's estimate for this project is eight hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. And again, this is, this exhibit kind of shows the benefiting properties. So all these properties are on here with a number. Will be proposed to be assessed one full unit if they have kind of this yellow outline and have direct access. There are four properties that are actually on Ford Drive. And those properties are proposed to receive one quarter of an assessment. So there are sixty-seven properties with direct access, four with indirect. The city is proposing to pay fifty percent of the project costs, which results in a direct access assessment amount of six thousand, one hundred and eighty per unit for the four indirect accesses. And I should clarify, it's indirect, but necessary access, which means that those homes have to use Old Viking Boulevard in order to access their homes. They would receive an assessment of one thousand, five hundred and forty-five per unit. Schedule-wise, this slide kind of shows where we're at on the schedule. We're way up here at the top at the public improvement hearing. We have all these steps that would have to be taken in order to advance this project. So assuming that the council heard from the residents tonight and the majority were in support, the next step would be to order plans and specifications. We then take those plans and specs out to the contractors, you see the actual contractor bids. We would open those bids sometime in March. And after we have those bids, we can, we could then send the, the second hearing notice that the attorney mentioned earlier, the assessment hearing notice. That is the time when we actually know, you know, we now have the contractor bid. We know for sure what this project is going to cost. We then have the assessment hearing in April of this year. Receive the resident feedback as to the amount of the assessment. And then this is the point of no return that the attorney was speaking of earlier. So up until April, we can stop this project at any time. But once the city council approves the bids and awards the contract, that is the point when we have to go through with it and we have to construct the project. This project, we would, we would allow a pretty large window for the contractor to complete it. And we generally feel that's when we get our best bid prices, when we say, you know, complete it between this month and this month. But then we'd probably give them, on a project like this, once they start construction, six to eight weeks to actually complete construction. So it's three and a half miles of road, so there is a, a fairly good-sized construction window. But just to be clear, it would not be under construction from June till September, so. We've always, here at the public improvement hearings, you know, what are the alternatives? Can we delay the project? And yes, delaying the project is always an option. If we do delay the project, we'd expect to see more pattern cracking. We'd expect to see that continue to worsen. We'd, we'd see more potholes over time. And really, delaying the project is kind of delaying the inevitable. A more expensive repair is likely in the future. And because of the more expensive repair, the city's future ability to fund that more expensive repair is really hard to say yet. So that's the end of my presentation. This is a formal public hearing and we're trying to keep track of, of your comments. And so if you do have something to say, please step up to the podium and address the mayor. Thank you.
All right. We, we do invite your, your feedback. You've got whatever time it takes.
I'm Charlie Zias, sixty-two, twenty-five, Old Viking. We know something should get done, whether it's asphalt or gravel. And I do have concern about two properties that are on Old Viking that are on the assess. One is on forty-seven at the end, on the east end. He does have a field road that accesses Old Viking. And the other one is just, so, yeah, you see it right north of sixty-seven there. And then the other one is just south of number eight. And not quite sure why that one is not on the assessment. They have to go the other page.
Number sixty-seven.
Number eight, north of number eight. And why that one?
South of eight is a cemetery.
That's a cemetery.
That's all cemetery, probably. We're trying to collect taxes from dead people, but it hasn't worked yet. You can figure out a way, though, let us know.
All right, so that's. And then there's a small development that built a awesome place. What's happening there? And are they being, is that one unit, is that multiple units? How is that being assessed? They're building right now there, and I don't know, you guys should know if they're gonna be.
Shane, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Right, that's the, the ward subdivision, and we do show.
Two, two of those properties, there's, there's gonna be two additional properties. One's going out onto. The salt. And, and so the, the original farmstead's gonna continue on Old Viking.
Correct.
And the development along the lake will come onto Viking. So those two will be assessed, the one under the salt will not.
All right, so now, Old Viking, there's some, that's a main town road, which we all know now. And there's countless homes that are north of Old Viking that use Old Viking to go to and from home, all right? And there's a few businesses that are on Old Viking. And their customers use the road. And then we have the threshing show and other events at the threshing site. Those get used quite a bit. So the business public uses Old Viking quite a bit. And so my statement is that we realize it's, that we have to pay something. But I don't feel that the property owners here should pay, should shoulder half the cost on this. This is a main town road. And to end, and you already know how I feel about the speed limit down Old Viking, that, that really needs to get lowered. If this gets done, this will turn into a raceway down that road.
Okay, so, since you brought that up, I'll, I'll get my pitch in here. I've got a, I've got a. Is it dinner? I got a bet going on this one with some people in the city here. I've done extensive research. Some of you may know that councilmember Brian and I were out actually doing some measurements last, last fall. And I believe that we can get that speed limit lowered. What I'm gonna need is to get together with the residents and figure out what that's going to be. But spent a lot of time with people at, at MINDOT. And we've got a lot of different opinion, different opinions. And we finally walked through the various state statutes. And we believe this is a city road and we can get it lowered. We're still having arguments amongst ourselves on that. But what I need to know is the residents, separate from this, is we need to have a gathering of a consensus of what that's gonna be.
Of the residents of Old Viking.
Typically, that will be, if you're gonna do that, it will be a thirty-five mile an hour road.
Perfect.
And some residents think that's too slow. Okay. And, and so, so we believe with, you know, we can get this done to a thirty-five mile an hour road. As I, I warned people last year, when we do that, we will ask the sheriff to enforce that. Because we do know that's a cut through, people that want to stay off the county road, sneak by on your road. And, and if they're going to be exceeding that speed limit, we will ask the sheriff to enforce it.
Perfect.
So residents will need to understand that, that they need to abide by it too. But those cutting through, we are, we are, I haven't put it to the council yet, but I would expect that the support's there to lower that speed limit. And I think it's the perfect time in conjunction with this project to, to do that. Yeah, there's a county road out there, if you want to go faster, get on the, get on the concrete and go faster.
All right. Thank you.
But I guess, Mr. Mayor, one thing I will, just as the city attorney, just, the city doesn't have complete control over speed limits. On state laws, and, and, and we're, we're, you know, we're trying to get. I, I just, before you make promises, you may not be able to keep. I just want to make sure people understand. They'll try their best to get you the speed limit you want, but there are limitations on that.
But we need the support of all you folks.
Yeah. And, and, and I spent a lot of time with the MINDOT people because we went back and forth. And Shane has told me repeatedly, no, we can't do it. But we've actually measured the distance in the driveways. I got MINDOT to pull it up on a map. And, and for most of it, you know, I think probably from sixty-six back down to Nowland, we're pretty good.
Right.
When I talked to them about that section between sixty-six and forty-seven, you know, there's some consensus among them that you're going this far, we could do that. Or you keep that at the fifty and, and lower the rest of it. So obviously, and, and the advice of the attorney, I won't make promises. And since the council hasn't weighed in on it yet, and, and Shane has a lot of experience and his, his experience has, hasn't been done effectively elsewhere. But I spent many hours with the MINDOT people and we've, I believe we're at the consensus here that we can do that. So I will be asking for support of the residents in that when we, we'll, we'll put it on the council agenda and look at doing that. Yeah, I did talk with a few people when, when we were out there. We almost got shot because we were out getting late at night doing our measuring from driveway to driveway. It's nice to know that people do watch their neighbors there, so we appreciate that. It's nice to know that people do watch their neighbors there, so we appreciate that too. There's some, we just have to decide if 35's good. So be talking amongst yourself, but that would be probably the proposal, to drop it to 35.
Okay.
And get that passed by the council and state, so. Separate issue from the road project, obviously, but should be done at the same time, I believe. Other comments?
Anita Swanson, 6824 Old Viking. I have a couple of questions on is, is the culvert on Jasper and Old Viking, does it work? Does anybody know? Is there a culvert there? And what are they going to do with another area right next to Jasper? They replaced it, the potholes, three times last spring. It's on the west side of Jasper. There is always a pothole there. The water runs there. There's no culverts at all. And I guess I would like to know what they're going to do on culverts and what they're going to do. Are they going to fix them, clean them out, make them working, put new ones in? And then as far as the speed?
So Anita, I just, we'll try and capture this, but you were saying the culvert at Jasper, we need to make sure that it's functioning. And one of the things, and so on the west side, you're saying there's a pothole that forms on the corner?
The city replaced it three times in the spring rusher. It's a huge pothole and I don't know it's in front of, it's between 42 and 43, I believe. Because Eisenhower must be 44.
Yep.
And I think it's between 42 and 43, right there on the south side of Viking, or Old Viking. The water runs over it and when the rain runs, you could actually hydroplain when the rain is running across that road. It, there's no place for the water to go at all. You raise the road, it's still going to be there.
One of the things that Shane did not include, if you've seen your packet, the drainage system, the cost for drainage improvements, and there's a number that Shane has identified on this, have not been included in the assessment portion of this. We've talked about that in the council. We have a new council, obviously, so we have to discuss this further here. But the consideration is that possibly with the funds we have for road improvements in town, you know, that we levy every year anyway, that the city would be looking at sharing that portion of it. Again, going back to the comment, this is a, a main thoroughfare, so the city will share some of that cost if the council approves that. So the city would be looking at remedying the drainage issues and obviously there is, in front of Eisenhower Shanks there and down from there, there is a curb to try and direct the water. So we have to look at where that water's going and how we properly manage it. But with the council's approval, the city would weigh in on some of those costs. So, and then you were starting to talk about the speed limit.
Well, nobody knows where I'm at. I might remember 45 if anybody wants to know where I am. That's me. And so I'm kind of in the middle of the road from between now then Boulevard and 47. And 50, I don't see a problem with 50, but I don't think anybody travels 50. I mean, you all want to lower it to 35, which is a couple cats, a couple dogs on the road because everybody travels over 50. I mean, if they just would control 50 and get everybody to slow down to 50, would be great. But I can tell you, last night, somebody I know was going way over 50. I know that everybody wants to lower it and you lower it, you're still going to get people going over 35. Everybody's going to. I think 35's excessive from 50. It is a 50 mile an hour road, isn't it?
It's currently posted at 50.
Yeah, it is 50. I know. There's a lot of people that don't travel. They travel way down.
50 on that, and especially in the wintertime, is a rough ride.
Well, you know, that's a whole different subject.
But, but I think that, that again, we'll have the speed limit debate another time, but I think that, that posting 35, yes, people will always exceed the speed limit. And I think that's where.
And they already exceed 50. So if you get it, go slow down. If you can get someone to park anywhere and anybody's, I mean, if they can stop at public access, the police, and just clock people, it's amazing what they vote.
Yeah, and, and the sheriff works for us. Obviously, we have a contract with the sheriff and we know, we would advise the sheriff where we think the problem areas are. And, and I, I would say that there's various times that people are going way too fast on that road. And there's also times that, for a variety of reasons, people don't want to be on the county road where they assume the sheriff's going to be, so.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there's lots of reasons why people take that road and not go on busy roads.
So we're going to put this kind of money into that road. We want to maintain it as best we can and obviously we want it to be a safe road as well. We, we are not proposing at this point of widening that. Right now, the road bed is 22 feet. And you know, on some of those curves, there, there's some ruts. We're going to do a better job maintaining the shouldering on that, but on some of the curves and that, the ruts get pretty bad. But the cost of putting an extra two feet on to make that a 24-foot wide road would raise this price significantly. So it was suggested last year at the road improvement hearing that we maintain the 22-foot road bed and that's what we've priced at this point is the 22 feet. So it's not, we're not making it wider and, and better to go faster on it.
Okay. And at the beginning of this discussion, I do believe it was you, Mayor Pion, that said that six, this involves 66 properties? How many properties does this involve?
67.
67?
I forgot the ward property had split since last year. I did this.
Does that include Paulson's then? Because Ward is building a house and Paulson's old house, that's being occupied.
Yes. So Ward's 23 and Paulson's 22.
Okay. All right.
It does not include, at this point, the one that came up earlier, Al Paulson's property. Because Al Paulson's property, the driveway, the official driveway goes out into 47, the field access is on the.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
And actually, right now, the Threshing Show, the Storm Society appears to have three numbers there. Eight, nine, and 10 all seem to be the Threshing Show.
Isn't seven part of that too, though?
No.
I thought, I thought they bought that house.
Okay, if they bought the house, then they have four.
I thought the Threshing Show bought that house.
I wasn't aware of that. If they did that, then they'll have four.
It's still in. It's not completed, but that sale isn't completed.
But isn't that what, I mean, they claim it was sold. The sign says sold.
Well, if, if it is, they will, they will get the fourth assessment. And right now, we're not doing it by lot size, we're doing it by unit. And so if they, if they did buy that property and own it, they will have four portions of this, which for those that say, you know, part of this was the, you know, the few times a year, certainly in August, there's a lot of traffic. And then they also have three or four more other events throughout the year with lesser traffic. But being that they would be paying four parcels, or four units on this, that does contribute some of that overall, you know, that they are using the road or their customers are using the road, but they're also paying four units.
I have one other question. I guess I need to catch it.
Excuse me, I've got that right, Shane.
Correct.
Was Redwood Construction started?
Sometime after June.
Sorry?
Could be likely be sometime after June.
It depends. Right, right now, what's happening is, is we're, we're proposing five construction projects to try and get a better cost from contractors. And we approved three of them to go to the next step last week and we have two tonight. And if that, if these proceed, the idea is that the contractors would be enticed here with the multiple projects. The window of construction is during the non-school time, so we're not dealing with buses and the like. But this is a more major project and as Shane said, it's probably eight weeks potentially. So I don't know exactly if they do a portion at a time or how they, they do that. We'll need to know that too. But right now, we don't know where it's going to fit their calendar. The reason we're doing this hearing in January is so we can get on their calendar.
I guess I'm just concerned because our equipment is really wide.
Yep.
Everybody knows where we live and it would, it's, it's, it's at the heart of our season for us. And so I don't know how we would get on and off of that road. I mean, yeah, we can get to Jasper, but we're going to be a pain to them, one way or the other. And then a lot of our pay goes the other direction, so we're going to be in the way in our equipment. I mean, I know they're going to want us to get older.
Shane, what, what is typical in that situation? If you're familiar, they, they do a lot of hay, they're going to have a lot of hay racks and trucks and.
Sure. I mean, so even though the project itself might take eight weeks, the, you know, it's generally done in phases and there's only really a few times where there's, say, construction occurring on, on one portion of the road and it's difficult to get around them. That's really going to be on the, the day of paving. So even if, you know, they're grading the road, shaping it with a blade, you know, as soon as that blade gets passed, or they can pull over and can get out the side of the road, let the, the hay wagons pass, it's really just, you know, during this operation. And so from the time the batuminus comes out of the paver to the time that it's rolling to be driven on, it's only about five to eight minutes, depending on temperature and how fast they roll it. So really, it's, and that, that paver is going to move pretty fast. We'll, we'll have a requirement that they have to stop at the same transverse joint at all times. So in other words, let's say they, they worked a 10-hour day, they'd spend the first five hours pulling this side of the road and then they move their paper over and pull this side of the road. So there's, there's maybe two times during the day where you can't travel on that road for 10 minutes or something in front of your house.
We would, we would, you know, obviously, dealing with contractors that, if they're used to dealing with country roads at all, I mean, I think we'll be as accountable as we can. Other questions, comments, concerns?
First and foremost, I'm in agreement that this has got to be done and it's a good project. But what I ask of you, Mr. Mayor, and the council is, when it comes time to bid this job, please take a good hard look at different contractors that you're looking at to do the job. Because like any other business, there's good management difference. Now, we all know the monetary figures are concerned here. But at some point in time, it may be worth just a little more money to get the right person doing this. And I say this because what I do for a living is I build roads, a lot of the roads, township roads throughout the North Metro, South Metro, wherever, that's what I do. I build roads from the gravel work to the paving. To answer your question, man, is what they will do is in a situation like our road here, they will pull one lane. They'll have flaggers on both ends of the roadway that's still working. They will close it for directional traffic. They'll leave one lane unpaved. They will pave one lane, shut it down and let the other, the traffic travel east and west at different times through a flagger. The flaggers will stop traffic, so there won't be any trouble getting anybody through there. But my biggest concern is this. I've seen good roads, bad roads, and then different roads. And in my humble opinion, there's only two companies out here that could do a road that I would like to see in front of my house. And I'm sure you probably don't want it the other. But I just ask that you do deal with it when you accept these bids. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Generally favorable. Obviously, we don't have 67 people here tonight, 67 different residents. We are, we are on YouTube. The council members' contact information is on the city website. So if you think of something after the meeting tonight and you want to contact us directly, you can either contact Ellen at the office and she'll pass the message on to all the council members, or you can call the council members directly, email us with other questions. Again, there will be another opportunity, should we proceed tonight, to the next step, there will be another opportunity before we hit the point of no return. Obviously, we hit that point last year and we changed our minds before we, while we still could. So pricing and, we'll have a big part of that. And see how many people are actually interested in bidding the projects. Again, I think the drainage is going to be important. We'll work with the engineering firm to make sure we have proper drainage. One of the questions came up in the last meeting was, you know, setting mailboxes. If you look at the, at the estimate here, there's some significant cost. But you've got mailboxes all the way along that have to be within the postal spec. And when you raise the road bed base and put new asphalt on top of it, that can affect that. We'll also be tying in the driveways, depending on the type of driveway and, and its angle to the road, how back, how far back the apron goes. And putting new shoulder all the way down, so. I do think this is a better solution than last year, I think, to reclaim and, and take it down the way we should. You're not dealing with all the patching, you're not dealing with all the seal coating and the crack sealing that's in there, so. Other comments? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we'll, we'll close the improvement hearing on Old Viking Boulevard.
I just thought I was on the king of this cold.
That's definitely the sound this year.
What do you guys want?
A little profession. I didn't like that.
I think it's beautiful.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so we'll see.
How long they do, people down there?
My backyard, judge, over I can pass. Woo! My backyard.
Yeah, because obviously a lot of people here today.
Right. Yeah, look, very well.
Like I said, the people that have not been, on Thursday night, we had a little, you know, it's thirty years.
People are going to, they're going to go between 35 and 40 next.
My wife's on that full year, because I drive, 45.
Neither.
All right. Well, I'm going to, I can rope Darlene with my head.
Yeah.
We've had this debate.
What's that? Oh, I'm fine.
Shane and I just, a lot of times.
We have to.
And I'm pretty convinced that I have raised the city road.
Because I, I've heard, I've pulled up a map.
That's kind of my opinion.
Yeah.
And, and so again, I've got a, I've got a primary driveway, I've got a.
All right, well, I'm gonna I can rope Darlene with my head. I'll talk to her.
We've had this debate.
What's that? Oh, I'm fine.
I know.
Shane and I just, a lot of times.
Yeah, we have to.
And and I'm pretty convinced that I've raised City Road. Because I I've heard, like, I have to pull up a map.
That's kind of my opinion.
Yeah, and and so again, I've got a, I've got a primary driveway, every.
Yeah, I just do, I did that last year. You know, it's like, okay, this is really cool. I think we're close to calling.
That's I said, you know, to me, I'm going to be right on this, first of all, the great drivers. But he said, you take a look and you average, and we got some, you get on the west end. They're very close.
Yes.
And he said, they they would go over there.
And you have a background on that.
You get up by the, by the, uh, threshing show on driveway. Oh, I'm relatively certain.
He made the comment, I don't know if anybody knows this. Okay, we're here at forty-five. That's true, so, um. That's how it goes, so must be right by, um, Zawetowski's, except for your customer.
You heard it last year.
Because, but it's right across from Zawetowski's. Zawetowski's, yeah, because we're forty-five here, so I think it's right here. Between Zawetowski and our our property. It's a cove. And then there's tile.
So is tile underneath the culvert?
It's actually tile, tile, probably, um, something like that.
Okay.
And in the culvert, there's not, probably, you know, they got a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
They need to know that there's tile.
I.
Sure.
I think it's check with fire. So what's the, over there, going through Berlin.
Oh, really?
For here, it's plain tile, well, I can do it from.
Not real, you know, we're east of here.
No, it's an open area, probably.
So the the water is kind of moving and it's pulled the dirt with it?
Yes, yes.
Oh, they dug that?
They dug that, because they're draining a pond over a land property.
Okay, I see.
So they had to do something because it dacked my water all up to the last end.
Sure.
That's what they did, they wouldn't. The tile went up and put it, just that open end instead of culvert.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a note of that. By property forty forty-three.
Uh, we're forty-five, and I think Zawetowski is, let me have a picture, um, Shane, I took my eyes off.
Yeah, right there.
We're forty-five, 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 and she's right here, wherever she is. And so the culvert is somewhere right here.
Okay.
And tile and everything, and it runs from our pond to the patch, uh, to the lake, to Pickle. So it's all tiled and culvert, it's right there.
Okay.
It's an open tile, an open culvert in the backside.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, about the tile over there.
And about seven to eight feet down, you think?
Probably, maybe not six or seven, probably five feet, though.
Five feet, okay.
And then the other one down, the other one down, probably. And, uh, when they dug it, too, then there's a great big wire, the telephone wires that sucked all, the dirt all around that, too.
Okay, so I just exposed telephone wires?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
So they got to be careful over there.
Okay.
When they're, when they're operating, they got to be careful.
Yeah, I probably can't see it now because, I mean, it's a little full of snow, but I'll take a look at it.
You'll see it in the spring, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then actually down on the other end of my property, on my asphalt, there's a spot there where they had culvert they hadn't put in, it laid there for many years in a ditch. It finally disappeared, but they got a big gobble, telephone wires in that culvert, too.
Okay.
There's two-day issues there.
Yeah, okay.
And they never took care of it, it made it, it made it work, you know?
Okay.
So I don't think you want to be putting new on some of that.
Sure.
Clot together.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Oh, okay, so he's, there is a, so you want for certain, for, on the road, there's a speed limit, that's. Oh, okay. Well, that's good. So, you want to see?
I'm going to say, she needs something. So, yeah, we.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a couple resolutions here to decide on. Resolution twenty nineteen oh nine, ordering improvements on Hallis Street Improvement Project. Based on what you heard tonight, and it was kind of ambiguous, head shaking both ways, it needs to be done, but nobody ever wants to do it. How says the council, do we proceed to the next step?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I move that we do proceed to the next step for the previously said resolution number.
Second.
Motion to second, other discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, ordering improvements to Old Viking Boulevard Improvement Project. Again, uh, we didn't have near the percentage turnout here, but we had enthusiastic people at the meeting. How says the council on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I move that we proceed with resolish, oh, excuse me, resolution number twenty nineteen dash ten.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
We 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 had an option last year and wasn't able, because of circumstances, to to go ahead and to get it done. I mean, we've been talking about Old Viking for a long time, and I think it's not, we're we're in a position where we can go ahead and enable that project to to get it finally completed.
I think, in addition, we do, in order to make this a reliable project, I think we need to make sure the city considers thoroughly the drainage issues. Make sure that we're addressing those. So as we consider our funding on other road projects this year, consider that we need to come up with some funds and make sure we have the drainage addressed on this this resolution. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve this resolution?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll officially close these two hearings. And we'll sign the resolutions. And we'll move to our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, uh, just a couple of quick comments. And the the one comment I just wanted to address, it doesn't require any action, so it's okay if we already closed the meeting. So on the Old Viking Boulevard, you notice how we have less turnout with the second public improvement hearing than we do the first public improvement hearing? And it's been our experience that that happens, just all given time. So the longer, the more advanced notice that we can provide to these residents, the more time they have to think and and process that information, and it seems, it just seems that the process goes better. So, uh, really, it's not too early to start thinking about our twenty twenty projects this summer and to start, you know, after we get these projects bid and off the ground, and to start having, maybe start with the informational meeting. And again, you know, residents are always real interested and and you have, see a lot of participation up front, but kind of as the hearings go on, I generally see less opposition and generally a smoother project, so.
Well, and is it typical, from what I've seen, is is that you would start this in the June-July timeframe for a project plan of twenty twenty?
That is.
You would start communicating and getting information out to the residents, so there is, it doesn't feel so compressed as we're in the situation we're in right now.
That that has become the new normal.
So, um, we will want to, yeah, obviously, it'd be nice to get these things rolling, get through the April timeframe, but, you know, come May-June, we should be putting these back on the agenda and getting some meetings. And that that'll help us, too, in in our, because that'll be in the middle of our budgeting cycle as well, so we'll have
Sure.
a better idea, so. Do you have a tickler file at all, Ellen? Do you use?
Not for road projects.
Well, just for agenda items?
Oh, I I just, at this point, I'm just making folders for different months and sticking it in.
Yes, that's a tickler file. That's a tickler file, so. So if you would do this for the May timeframe, to take a look at the twenty twenty, uh, road project schedule, we can start scheduling meetings.
On May agenda.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty road projects.
And Shane, you had one other thing you said?
Uh, the other item is, I just want to make the council aware that I'll be engaging a geotechnical firm. And I don't know that I necessarily need soil borings for these, uh, the reclaimed projects, but we do need definitely the existing bituminous thickness and aggregate base thickness. And that's necessary so that the the bidders that are bidding on the reclaiming have some level of confidence of how thick that reclaim has to be. Generally, if they're expected to reclaim twelve inches, that takes longer and it's a higher bid price than if they reclaim seven inches. And so without having that knowledge, we don't have the information we need to to.
And and that'll be additional cost to what we see here?
Uh, no, I would assume that would be, uh, that's part of the overall engineering and
Okay.
administrative cost.
But you'll you'll need to do that ahead so that they know what they're bidding on.
Correct.
Any council have any problem with that?
You may see a testing firm vehicle out there popping holes in our road within the next, uh, several weeks, so just.
They can do that in the winter?
Yes.
They just go through the blacktop?
Correct.
All right, I will open the, uh, special city council meeting. Uh, it's five after eight, so right about on time here. We have two items to discuss, uh, here. The first item is to determine the status of the five road projects that the previous city council had had approved. But, um, there was question as to the wisdom of going ahead with that. Some discussion with people that were going to be on the council that weren't yet sworn in or on the council. Question the wisdom of of the size of the road project we had and discussing it with the attorney and with the engineer. The wisdom of success doing that many projects with this scale uh, this quickly, having not done but one project ever as a city. So there was a a recommendation to present it to the council to make that decision. So the previous council, um, obviously, anything the previous council did, the current council can go along with it or change it. You you are now the council, so whatever the previous council did, this council has the authority to do something different or take what they did and and run with it. But we have five projects here, and so what I want to do is put it officially to the council. If you, as if we as a council decide we want to go through with these five projects, we've only slightly delayed the process. We would then, instead of having this hearing tomorrow night that we would have done here, within two weeks, we'll be having this hearing, we get the notices out, we could have the hearing on these, and decide if we want to double the amount of money that we're spending on this. The challenge here is, um, these could be significantly more challenging or challenged by the residents, uh, cost-wise and convenience-wise. What we're looking at is, um, B, C, D, and E. Well, actually, B, C, and E. And A, Willow Creek Road, is that Ebony and Garnett?
That is.
So the only one that that isn't part of that neighborhood, so right now, if we're talking about Jasper, we're talking about from Old Viking down to one hundred eighty-fifth. We're talking about two side streets there, one hundred eighty-ninth and one hundred ninetieth. Another north south street, Dolomite, between one hundred eighty-ninth and one hundred ninetieth. And then the Willow Creek area, which is Ebony and Garnett Development, running down to one hundred eighty-fifth. So this would tie up that entire neighborhood. So doing this project, um, you're basically engaging all of those residents at the same time. Jasper has fewer residents on it. So the cost-wise, the likelihood of us successfully doing this was less than great. And so the engaging the attorney and the engineer to do all the background and getting the people excited and then not following through on it didn't look like a good idea. But it's up to the council to decide, do you want to go through with this? We will schedule those meetings and get those residents in here in the next few weeks. If we would like to hold off on it, then I need an official vote of the council to change what the previous council said and vote not to proceed at this point, but as we just said, let's take a look at readdressing this in the May timeframe so we have more opportunity for residents to weigh in and get more feedback before we go through the whole feasibility and and improvement hearings. So, uh, we're talking about one additional item D, Watercrest Boulevard. And if you're familiar with water, where Watercrest is, it comes up off of one hundred ninetieth. And I don't know if we have that anywhere, but, um, it should be in the packet here.
It's off of one eighty-seventh.
Off of one eighty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Seven pages from the back.
All right, so if you take a look at at Watercrest, the aerial view there, we're dealing with five properties. Oh, it's right there, so we got five properties, and then the cul-de-sac at the end would be a sixth property. But that road was done more recently than the rest of it. So Watercrest has been a problem. This is where the plow went through, we didn't, I don't know if we did a patch job last year? Well, we talked about doing a patch job and maybe just doing the whole road at the same time. The question came up in discussion, does it make sense to patch this at this point and then do the whole project? The cul-de-sac from one hundred eighty-seventh all the way to the end as one, rather than doing two-thirds of it now and then having the the tail end of the cul-de-sac age separately and then have to match that in later. So is there wisdom in taking some of our city funds, our road improvement funds, and patching this and getting by until that road is ready for the whole thing? Am I explaining that to your understanding, Shane?
Yeah, I I I think that's accurate. Um, you know, one other thing to know is this property owner, I I believe she's still the the current property owner, uh, she had split a lot and she was required to extend this road as part of that lot split. The the cul-de-sac used to be at this location. Uh, so she extended this road at her cost, and if I recall correctly, it was right around sixty thousand dollars of her cost, uh, to extend that road. And so on one hand, if we, um, if we exclude her or this property from the assessment, I'm sure we're going to have a difficult time with some of these residents explaining why she is using this portion of road but not paying for it. On the other hand, if we include her with an assessment, I would expect, uh, that that she would be opposed to that considering that she paid for the entire costs of this portion of road. So this one is challenging, I I think I think it's going to take some time to sort it out. And this was identified as a project that could potentially slow down our other projects.
All right, so that's Watercrest. It does need some patching, because we did have a problem last year with the plow going through the asphalt surface. So we do know that there will need some city funds to. So we do know that there will need some city funds to at least patch it and get it by. But Councilmember Blake.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Shane something? Is that road that she put in, the $60,000 addition, is that in good shape?
It is.
So then, why wouldn't the residents understand that that road doesn't need any, her, her part of the road doesn't need any upgrading, but theirs does? But you think that's going to be an issue?
Because she still travels from the.
You can't get to her house without.
Can't get to her house.
I know, but she already paid her assessment on that road.
But you got five.
They will look at it as that was only for her benefit, because she wanted to split off that lot. And that's why, so this was a, her economic decision. But she still is a resident of that area and she still uses that road. I mean, that's the argument you're going to get.
So you're going to tear off her road and fix that even though there's nothing wrong with it?
No, no, the, the way this feasibility report was written is that we would stop the construction here. Uh, and that only the property shown in yellow would receive an assessment. In addition, uh, in addition to her property, there's actually one other property here.
What that property?
That, and their driveway comes on to the new portion of the road. So none of their property abuts any portion of the road to be reconstructed.
But they didn't pay anything.
But they didn't pay anything. They, they were just kind of the right place at the right time, kind of thing. Their, their driveway used to come to the end of the cul-de-sac. And after the road was extended, now it comes straight out to the new portion of road.
And right, and right now, so the assessment would be, their portion of it was estimated to be 68-80. And if they can get at least two other people to pay a portion of that, right or wrong, they're going to say, hey, you, you can't get to your place unless you go on this road. You should pay a portion of that. And that's why the, the suggestion that we may want to give this one a little more time to work out the details, a longer timeframe, if we bring this back up in May, it gives us a chance to, to work with residents on it and see what's realistic. Rather than jeopardize these five projects we just went through, because we got hung up on this one and the other one. If you, if you, you should have the Jasper and the. I think the Krypton was in here too, I'm sorry.
Would like to look at Jasper next, or?
I'll go to Krypton next, because we held off on Krypton at this point, too.
So on Krypton Street, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
You know, this has been, Krypton Street has been on our radar for probably the last five to 10 years. And specifically, there's a kind of an area here that has been patched, it's broken up. It, there's some, some grade problems. And so it's been on our, our road plans for at least the past five years, if not longer, because of this problem area. When, this year, when I visited the site in preparation of the feasibility report, I observed that, you know, there's block cracking and pattern cracking more prevalent on the entire road, so it was recommended for a greater repair. However, I did not include this network of roads, which are about the same age and probably could use an overlay at the same time. And so the discussion at what the council was, maybe for this project, it makes sense to overlay kind of this whole network of roads and have one assessment for the entire area as part of a slightly larger project.
And if you're familiar where this is, the top of the road there is 66 coming off of, so 47 is the north-south road. And that 66 coming in, clear road there. And this is a, a little tail that sticks down in. And we, we considered, you know, Merle's Drive or whatever that is there should really be part of this project. And since we didn't do a feasibility study with that, again, it seemed to make sense to put this into the larger projects of next year and do a feasibility study for the whole neighborhood rather than just that one section.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Do you think it would be more advantageous to delay these five till next year?
Pardon?
Do you think it'd be advantageous to delay these five projects till next year and not do them this year?
I'd do.
Were you asking if we wanted to do them this year? Because I'm thinking we should do them next year.
It's up to the council. I, you know, I, I have one vote on the council. And there are concerns that by not proceeding with the feasibility studies that the council previously had done, that, you know, we need to make sure this council has said whether they want to do this or not. My recommendation is that we would hold these off for further study and bring them up in the May-June timeframe so that we can do a better job presenting it to the residents.
And then.
More complete job in this neighborhood and a better understanding.
And then possibly do them next year?
Yes.
Well, I think that's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor, my question is finance.
Councilmember Blake. Finance?
Yeah, I mean, we're, gas, oil prices are down right now. A year from now, they could skyrocket again. I mean, there's just no, this is the concern I have. I think this is a, a nice time to do these things because of those, because of the cost of oil and gas.
We don't, we don't know if it'll be higher or lower. You never know that.
If it goes lower, that'd be great.
But that's true.
But we're in, we're in a good, this is one of the lowest it's been for a long time.
You're also talking the total cost here is, do you happen to know off the top of your head, Shane?
Mr. Mayor, it's just over a million for those.
So it adds a million dollars to our projects.
And if you actually add in the overlay on Krypton, that would increase, that would be a move beyond that.
So that's the other challenge.
So if we added all 10 projects together for this year, doesn't it end up around 2.5 million, which is almost our entire city budget?
It's actually, it's over our city budget.
So that's why we want to do half next year.
Okay, that makes sense.
The five projects that we just, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
The five projects that we just, if my math was right, when I put them together, the five projects that we just had the public hearings on was just a little over 1.2 million dollars. So if you add in a million plus, now you're bonding over 2.2 million dollars to do all 10 of these projects. The proposal that was given to us back in October was, we originally talked about a bond, a bonding for, was a total, total cost of 1.8 million dollars. Um, so bonding for one and a half million dollars. So that, you know, that would, if we did the whole thing, that would be more than what we, the original project that we, as I understand it, in putting the numbers together, that would be more than what we originally proposed back in October. The other challenge that I ran into was after we had this meeting, we had the road and bridge meeting. And we were talking about equipment at the time. And discussion came up at that meeting was the, was, at least the thoughts, nothing was set in stone, was using part of the greater funds to help pay for equipment. But I know that if I recall from this project, that once the greater bond was paid off, that it was included in here. So for me, there's now some discussion about where, where would that money go? And, and I don't know if, you know, not having seen how all the numbers play out for 2.2-plus million dollars in bonds, I'm, I would rather go conservative than, and going down a more known state than, than trudging, trudging into the unknown and going, where does all the financing come in for 2.2 million dollars?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would, um, I, I would like to see us postpone that. Now, I know I made the motion to, to move a mile forward. But after doing that and having conversations with, with different residents, I, I see that I probably should not have made that motion. It was a big step for us, and after having only one project under our belt, I think it's best to go more conservative. So I would move that we, we postpone road improvement projects, uh, resolutions 2018-70 to 74 and readdress those in May.
I'll second that.
And we got a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor.
And can we say the, the May-June timeframe? Because I would.
May-June, yes.
Councilmember Brian.
I don't know if this needs to be included in that motion, but yeah, I would certainly say that, just like we were talking about, um, with the, when we were talking about the public hearings, that there's certainly funds that we need to put into existing projects. The ditch work on Old Viking, we need to do something about Watercrest, if, whether it's a patch or, you know, to figure out how to, to get in there and out safely. And there's also, that was mentioned in one of Shane's report, was that we weren't adding the Rogers Lake project in at this time, but there's certainly work that we should be doing in preparation for that project. So, um, and, and maybe after we have a, um, you know, later, as the year progresses, if it's not a bigger project that we could look at, you know, possibly even pulling back one, one or two of these and doing them as individual projects as we get a better feel for how things go.
When you say individual projects, without assessments, or?
Uh, I, I, that, that would be up for discussion. Yes, I understand if we, if we do assessments, we would have to have hearings. But it's possible that some of the, um, whether it be patchwork or ditch work or whatever it is, that those wouldn't necessarily have assessments.
Right. So you're saying if the city's going to take it as, as a portion of, whether it's the drainage on Old Viking or patching Rogers Lake or Watercrest, some of those types of things that are normally conducted by our public works in a normal year, there would be no assessment. If we're coming back to an assessable, we'd have to go through the whole process in order to assess anything. So I, I agree, we need to maintain our roads. But at this point, it seems much more manageable to do the five, get some, again, success, success and some momentum going on that. And, uh, and have overreach and not do a good job at it. Shane, your, your thoughts or comments? And is a million-two big enough for, for contractors to?
It is, uh, uh, you know, any project near a million dollars is going to attract really competitive bids. Uh, and it's the same thing for bonding purposes. We had Lers in here, uh, I don't recall exactly when that was, but earlier in 2018. And they informed us of the same thing, that about a million dollars is kind of the magic number. Over a million dollars, uh, it's really attractive in the, the bond market. If you're a smaller project like our, our Pinnaker Lake project, which is a hundred and some thousand, that necessarily they wouldn't take and do a bond sale. Uh, that would be more of a, go to a, a local bank and request a certificate of indebtedness.
That's what it's.
So I have no concerns with, I mean, this is a good-sized project. It's really, from my perspective, uh, my recommendation is that we have to become more regular on doing road projects. And if we did a few million-dollar road projects, even in the next five-year timeframe, we would be going to catch up.
Have you, Ebony?
No, I agree with Shane's comments, and I also agree with something you said earlier, that as you educate residents and as you do these projects and you have successes, it feeds on itself, to the point where I can honestly tell you, Shane and I have sat right here together at other communities, and I, we know that the notices went out, but nobody shows up. You know, and, and that, I think, is a testament to the success of the project, knowing that the skills there with Shane and his people and the education that you guys as a city council and, and these other people have done in doing the informational meetings and stuff and getting the information out, it does seem to work. And I also will tell you, from my personal experience, residents all talk. So once you start having success, once you start having, and Shane's people, I hate, I, I've told this to a, a town that had never done a project before, down in the Rochester area about a week and a half ago. And I said, the key person is not your lawyer, I'd like to say it is, it's not probably even your engineer, it's your, your construction guy at the scene. He's the guy that everybody interfaces with. He's the guy that answers their questions, hears their concerns, addresses their issues, works with it, makes sure this whole thing is seamless, and makes sure that whatever Shane puts on his plans and specs gets built. And that also, Shane's people have gotten really high marks at other communities we're with. So I think you'll find that as you do this, and then the other question on the, you know, Shane says you do these projects, well, at that point in time, maybe you work with Lers and stuff to get a bond rating, to get maybe, it will be more, even more attractive and get the cost down and better interest rates and stuff. But you get yourself in a cycle, and that also really helps for budgeting. So again, I, I think, I approve of everything you guys are doing. I understand why you might want to put these projects off to, for consideration next year, and I have no concerns about it.
All right. Any other?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I guess I'd like to just say too, is, and you mentioned this earlier, it's not unusual for a council to change their minds, whether it be new council members or existing council members. I mean, that, that can and does happen. And so I, I'm comfortable going forward with this.
Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, we have a, a motion and a second to officially delay these five projects, 2018-70 through 74, to be reconsidered in the May-June timeframe of 2019. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, one other item, we have an update on the interim administrator search. We had said last week that we had a candidate pending approval of the attorney. The attorney has, has done his due diligence, and the attorney has not recommended that we move forward with that interim administrator. And so we will continue. Bob has gotten an update from the League of Minnesota Cities on potential interims that are available. And we'll be sharing that with us, and Dan and I will go back to the drawing board and bring forth another candidate for an interim. While we continue to look at full-time, there has been some, at least one fellow has called back from our original list, calling to see if the opportunity still exists. So we know that there's still some life in the list we got a couple of weeks ago from Bob. So Dan and I will continue to pursue that. I commend Ellen for the, the work she's doing. She has opportunity where she may want to take some time off. So we're going to figure out how we make sure that we're covered or what we can do in the office to get her covered there. But for right now, figuring how soon somebody could respond off, off the search list for an interim. We'll be back to square one with the interim and continuing in the process of interviewing for the full-time. That is our update. Anything else in the meeting? I guess that's all we can do. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Okay.
And we are adjourned at 8:30. Thank you all. Tables can stay up?
Yep.
Chairs can stay up?
Yes.